I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the December 1st Jackson Township Planning Board meeting of 2025. This meeting has been appropriately noticed according to the Open Public Meetings Act in all the appropriate places and forums accordingly. Madam Chairwoman.
Good evening, everyone. We'll have a roll call, please.
Mr. Bresi.
Here.
Mr. Marzo.
Here.
Mr. Heller.
Here.
Mr. Rogers.
Here.
Ms. Santoro.
Here.
Mr. Tremmer.
Here.
Ms. Rose.
Here.
Mr. Weingart.
Mr. Sullivan.
Here.
Dr. Campbell.
Here. We'll take a motion for payment of a voucher for recording. Secretary, please.
So moved, Sullivan. We gotta talk.
You're so popular.
Okay. Mr. Bresi.
Yes.
Mr. Marzo.
Yes.
Mr. Heller.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Ms. Santoro.
Yes.
Mr. Tremmer.
Yes.
Ms. Rose.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Dr. Campbell.
Yes. And we'll take a motion for approval of the minutes from November 3rd, please.
So moved, Sullivan.
Second.
Who was the second? Thank you. Mr. Bresi.
Yes.
Mr. Heller.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Dr. Campbell.
Yes. All right, a couple of things that we want to welcome Haley Santoro to our group and look forward to her bringing her youthful charm. And appreciation to Betty Rose for her service for the last several years. Betty is going to retire from a different position, but she's a valued member of our community and I'll continue to ask her questions. Thank you. All right. No resolutions?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Next meeting.
Did you want to say something about the change in schedule first?
Oh, the first application is going to be carried. The applicant indicated they will be providing an EIS statement, so that will be carried to the first meeting in January for scheduling, and then we can determine from there.
All right, so the application for Block 22401, Lots 7 through 12, for 510 Whitesville LLC is carried from tonight to the reorganization meeting on January 12, 2026, for scheduling purposes only with no further notice required. We'll take a motion to approve that.
So moved, Sullivan.
Second, Bresi.
A roll call, please.
Mr. Bresi.
Yes.
Mr. Marzo.
Yes.
Mr. Heller.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Ms. Santoro.
Yes.
Mr. Tremmer.
Yes.
Ms. Rose.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
Dr. Campbell.
All right.
Then we have three ordinances on tonight. We can have our board planner do the consistency analysis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The governing body has referred ordinances 2025-46, 47, and 48 to the board for review. For the record, I'd like to just read two portions of the land use law, so that the board members who may not have done this previously are familiar with what it is we're doing and what the scope of this is. In the land use law, under 40:55D-26 referral powers, it says, "Prior to the adoption of a development regulation, revision, or amendment, the planning board shall make and transmit to the governing body within 35 days after referral a report including identification of any provisions in the proposed development regulation which are inconsistent with the master plan and recommendations concerning these inconsistencies or any other matters as the board deems appropriate." Separately, in the municipal land use law in 40:55D-62, power to zone, says, "The governing body may adopt or amend a zoning ordinance relating to the nature and extent of the uses of land and the buildings or structures thereon. Such ordinance shall be adopted after the planning board has adopted the land use plan element and the housing plan element of a master plan." This board adopted the master plan in, I believe, July of 2025, and the housing plan element and fair share plan soon after that. So to the extent that the governing body has referred something to us in accordance with the municipal land use law, that's correct. Our responsibility is to look at these ordinances and say, are they consistent with these two documents? What I can tell you is that the drafts of these three ordinances are actually contained within the master plan. They were made as recommendations at the end of the report. So when the master plan subcommittee prepared the master plan document and it was adopted by the board, you saved yourselves a lot of work on December 1st, 2025, because I don't know how you could say it's not consistent with the master plan or the land development ordinance or the housing plan and fair share element of the master plan, when in point of fact, they are included in that document. Now, to the extent that the ordinances 2025, 46, 47, and 48 are not verbatim, maybe different specifics as to a lot and block or a development standard, our responsibility is to determine if it's inconsistent, if the ordinances are consistent with the master plan. Having reviewed the three ordinances and the master plan along with the housing plan and fair share plan, I would recommend to the board that you make a finding that these ordinances are not inconsistent with the master plan. Now, to the extent that we want to have a discussion about the ordinances themselves, it's generally the purview of the governing body at that level, because they're the entity that transmitted them to us. However, since we're here tonight, I'm happy to try to answer any comments or questions with regards to either the ordinances or the plans, understanding that myself and Doug didn't prepare them.
Well, we happily have several people here who did prepare them, and I think we ought to thank Mr. Marzo and Mr. Heller, who were on that master plan committee. We worked very hard, and those ordinances are very important to us. And then I thought I'd ask Mr. Bresi if he has any comments from the administrative side.
You know, when I looked at these ordinances, I looked at ordinances for several years. I have never seen any written this strong, especially for affordable housing, and the attorneys knowing how far and the engineers knowing how far we can go with it. Each one of them is 20% set aside, has a community center set to the scale of how many homes. Basements and garages are prohibited from conversions to rentals. Basements cannot have access from outside with a staircase or any way. No more than eight attached single townhouses at a single structure. Phasing amenities for the clubhouses and open space is a phasing amenity, so they just can't go and do the house and then not do the rest. You've got to phase everything in together so it finishes together. That's so important to something like this, where somebody can build a house and sell it, and then somebody does something else. This they'll be able to do, and they have to phase it in, but they can't move further if they don't phase it in. No parking within 100 foot of a roadway intersection. Visitor parking, extra spaces for visitors. Affordable housing attorney will review it for the UHAC, Uniform Housing Affordable Control. 50 units or more, minimum two separate roadways in and out. 80, 150 units or more, three roadways in and out. Now, that's something we haven't had for years. We've always fought for extra roadways going in, putting pavers in so fire trucks can get in and so forth. They're actually covered in this ordinance. And if it's on a county road, they must request, they can't demand it, they must request permission to widen the road from the county. That's some of the extra stuff that you see that you don't normally see in the old ordinances. So it was put together well, all the recommendations were put in, and it really carries a lot of weight to an ordinance that I haven't seen in years. Thank you.
Madam Chair, just so the record's complete, the affordable housing ordinances were broken down, 1 through 4. Ordinance 2025-29 and 2025-30, which we heard a couple months ago, were for the AH4 and 2025-46 is for AH1, 2025-47 is for AH3, and 2025-48 is for AH3A. So this will sort of complete full circle the affordable housing ordinances that were offered, referred, and approved previously by the board acting affirmatively and sending them back to the governing body for a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. We'll do them one at a time? Mr. Shea?
You could do all three, as long as it's a vote specifying that ordinances 2025, 46, 47, 48 are not inconsistent with the master plan. You could do them in bulk.
All right. We'll take a motion, then, please.
I'd like to make a motion that ordinances 2025, 46, 47, and 48 are not inconsistent with the master plan of Jackson Township.
Great.
Sullivan.
A second, please.
I'll second that motion with the remarks I made earlier.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll take a roll call on that, please.
Are you going to have public comment on these ordinances?
No, there's no public comment on consistency reviews.
You can do that at the town council meeting.
Second reading of the ordinance, there will be public comment.
I mean, in terms of planning?
So there is no public comment for consistency reviews.
Mr. Bresi.
Yes.
Mr. Marzo.
Yes.
Mr. Heller.
Yes.
Mr. Rogers.
Yes.
Ms. Santoro.
Yes.
Mr. Tremmer.
Yes.
Ms. Rose.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
And Dr. Campbell.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Anything else we need to do?
Nope, now we just have the next application.
All righty. Ms. Jennings?
Just to be clear for any latecomers, the 510, what is the name?
510 Whitesville.
510 Whitesville LLC has been carried, will not be heard tonight, just for any latecomers.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Donna Jennings from the law firm of Walens, Goldman, and Spitzer on behalf of the applicant. As the board is aware, the applicant is here this evening seeking amended preliminary and final major site plan approval to add approximately 787 square feet to the previously approved mezzanine area of the office retail building located at 146 North County Line Road, identified as Block 5301, Lot 12 on the township tax maps. The applicant also seeks to add seven electrical vehicle parking spaces to the previously approved plan to properties approximately 1.92 acres located in the HC Highway Commercial Zone, and the office retail building is currently under construction. The applicant will be seeking one bulk variance from ordinance section 244-197N to allow 108 parking spaces, including nine EV space credits, whereas 118 parking spaces are required. As will be discussed by the applicant's planner, the record will show that the applicant satisfies the positive and negative criteria to warrant granting the requested variance. And then just as a matter of record-keeping, the applicant's in receipt of the following review letters. Fire Department Review Letter dated September 15, 2025. Board Engineers Review Letter dated October 20, 2025. The Board Planner's Review Letter dated October 28, 2025. And we received an email today from the Environmental Commission dated December 1, 2025. In support of the application, we are going to call two witnesses, Graham McFarlane, who's sitting to my left, the site engineer and planner, and Rick Tokarsky, the architect. So if we could have Graham sworn in, we can begin.
First, we'll have Mr. Peters and Ms. Klee. Ms. Klee?
Thank you, Madam Chair. No objection or to, as Ms. Jennings presented the project, a 780 square foot addition to a previously approved project dating back to 2016 was the original approval. It is an addition within the footprint of the existing or approved building. No other engineering modifications to the existence of the previously approved development that's proposed, so it's really just the addition within the footprint of the building itself. There is to be some discussion as far as a design exception for the parking, but pretty much everything stays the same, was originally approved by the board.
Thank you. Mr. Peters?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Take no exception of Ms. Jennings's comments. I concur with Mr. Klee's comments. I'm not going to steal Graham's thunder. The previous variance relief for parking was, they were 12 parking spaces short. This evening, they're going to revise the plan and be nine parking spaces short. So I guess the phrase that us planners and engineers like to use is less worse. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I swear, Mr. Graham.
Yep. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state your name and spell your last on the record, because we don't know who you are.
Sure, it's Graham McFarlane, M-A-C-F-A-R-L-A-N-E, professional engineer, professional planner, with PDS, previously qualified and testified before this board a few times. So yes, quite...
Welcome, and we'll get you your own parking space next year, maybe.
Thank you. So... So quite simply, as described by Ms. Jennings and described by your professionals, the application is to add some additional amenity space to the office part of the building. If the board recalls, you know, this project, we had a lot of discussion when it was approved. The client had this concept of adding this amenity space, you know, this mezzanine has an amenity space. It really enhances the usability of the office, makes it a first-class office space. And again, provides amenity space for the existing tenants or the existing users of the building. There was a restriction or a condition in the original approval indicating such, and that is not going to be changed at all. And when you see Mr. Tokarski shows you the renderings of what that space is gonna be, you really get a really firm understanding of how that space is gonna be utilized and what it's gonna be for. And part of our argument, you know, originally was that, you know, we felt and we still feel the same way, that having this mezzanine space, this amenity space, doesn't change the need for the parking in the project as a total. We do understand that your ordinance does require parking to be determined based upon the entire gross floor area of the building, but that was all vetted when the project was originally approved and that variance was granted. And as Mr. Peters said, under the original approval, the application required, I believe it was 100 and... Original site plan required 114 parking spaces and 102 were provided, so there was a deviation of 12 parking spaces. Under this revised plan, we've added EV parking spaces to soften the deviation of the parking, so that 118 are required now, again, if we use all of that gross floor area, where 109 are provided, so a deviation of nine parking spaces. So we could even argue that the variance has previously been granted because it's even being lessened by this application. So we have on the screen, we have A1, which is the approved site plan. The approved site plan had three EV parking spaces that were located close to the building. So again, this plan had 99 physical spaces plus bonus credit for the three, parking credit of 102 parking spaces. One thing that we have come to learn after dealing with these EV spaces for a few years now is, the fire guys always want these spaces pushed further away from the building. Nobody, none of the fire guys, fire bureaus in this town or other towns, they all say, geez, we don't want these EV spaces right next to the building. So this plan is gonna accomplish that goal and also add some additional EV spaces. Anthony, you go to A2 for me, real quick? So A2 is the amended plan we're seeking the approval for, and you can see where we've shifted the EV spaces further away from the building. There are a total of nine EV parking spaces proposed back here. We've also added one for the handicap parking space, which frankly was not provided on the original site plan, but is required by the EV statute. So this plan would now fully comply with the EV requirements by having the one EV space in the handicap space, and we do have the nine proposed further away from the building. So I think that benefits the project, you know, pushing it further away from the building. And again, it's 109 that are proposed, where 118 are required if we were to count all of the space inside the building, but again, I really don't think we need to count that at all. We do have letters from your board professionals. We have Mr. Klee's letter of October 20th, where he discusses the project. He just confirms that he didn't identify any other variances needed, indicates that or confirms that we are not making any changes to the layout, we are not adding any impervious parking. So there's no changes to grading and drainage, lighting, or landscaping, solid waste storage, no changes to signage or any other items. So his letter really just points out all of those particular items. Mr. Peters' letter of October 28th, he summarizes the history of the project, the original approval, and then the amended approval that we got. And then he, of course, confirms the change in the parking, the variance being lessened from a deviation of 12 to a deviation of nine, and then just provides some language about compliance with the land use law. Then we also have two other letters, one from the Fire Bureau, and we got one, some email comments from the Environmental Commission first. To the comments from the Environmental Commission, I have three comments. One asks about traffic impact to wildlife in the area, and I would say that there's no change in this plan from the original approved plan that was fully vetted and previously approved. Asked if amended plans have been submitted to outside agencies, and the reply is, the plans have been submitted to the agencies as required. Again, there's no changes in impervious coverage, grading, or drainage, and other outside agency approvals frankly are not required. And some comment about changing parking spaces, EV spots near slopes towards lake, I'm not really sure what that comment is getting at, because we're not changing any grading, not adding any additional parking space, so I don't think there's any impact or anything to be addressed by that particular comment. We did get a letter from the Bureau of Fire Prevention dated September 15, and that letter had one comment about an additional fire hydrant being placed in the back, you know, near the EV parking spaces. And our position is, we don't believe that there's any code that requires a fire hydrant to be located behind this building in proximity of the EV parking spaces. The original application did have EV parking spaces behind the building. It was approved by the Fire Bureau, and at that time, there was no requirement to provide any fire hydrant back, you know, behind the building. Substantial site work has already been done on this project, utilities, you know, water system have already been installed. It would be frankly quite a hardship if the applicant were required to install a fire hydrant behind the building for those EV parking spaces. And further, I don't believe there's any code that requires a fire hydrant to be located behind this building in proximity to those EV spaces. So we are not in agreement to address that particular comment. I just think it's going above and beyond what any code requires for this application. With that being said, I think my testimony is complete, and maybe we get Mr. Tokarski to talk about the specific changes to the building and the mezzanine space.
Just actually, before you step away, can you just put your planner's hat on for a second and just go through the proofs for the request of the parking variance, even though it is an improvement over existing conditions? Is there something on the record?
Well, I would just say it would satisfy the test of the C2 variance, you know, the flexible variance, where the benefit of the variance outweighs any detriment associated therewith. I believe that there is adequate parking spaces provided for the building. We had previously testified that when the variance was originally granted. And again, this application, this amended application, were actually lessening the variance request, and one could argue that the variance, that there's really no change needed or no additional variance is required.
And would you say that it's an improvement, actually, because we are now providing the EV required for the handicap, which is now a part of the statute, which was not before?
Yes, it is. And in addition, just to summarize, we looked at the parking ratio of the approved plan and the parking ratio of this amended plan. The approved plan had parking at the ratio of one space for every 223 square feet, again, when we're including the gross floor area of all spaces. This plan has a parking ratio of one parking space per every 216 square feet, so a slightly better parking ratio provided on this plan as compared to the plan that was previously approved.
Thank you.
I have a question, ma'am.
Mr. Bresi?
I have one question on that. I understand, can you show on there what your pointer, where the fire hydrant would be if you put it where they're asking you to put it?
They've asked for a fire hydrant to be located in proximity, you know, to the EV parking space, which would be back behind the building. Of course, the water main is in County Line Road, water service comes in here to the meter pit and then goes over to the building. Here, we have a separate line for domestic and for fire suppression right now, that go over there.
And you say it's a hardship to run a rest of the line to that fire extinguisher, if you would have put it there.
Correct, for a couple of reasons. One is, those utilities have already been installed in accordance with the prior approval. And again, at that time, we had EV parking spaces proposed in the rear of the building, and, you know, they did not ask us to put the fire hydrant in the back. Second is, we only have a four-inch line going over to the building for the domestic and for the fire service. If we were required to put a fire hydrant in, we'd have to put a six-inch line in, so we'd have to put a new wet tap out to County Line Road. It's quite, be quite an undertaking for something that is not required by any building code.
Thank you for the explanation.
Any other questions? Mr. Tremmer?
I understand your point, but I believe the fire official is trying to make it known that what it takes to put out an EV fire, especially with the EV charging stations, it takes a copious amount of water. And that's the reason for the safety, is the safety of the building and also just the accessibility of it. Is it really a hardship if we're, are we weighing hardship versus safety? Because that's the reason for it. They want a hydrant back there because the amount of water you're gonna need to put out a fire of that type, it's just, it's a copious amount of water. And that's the verbiage that the fire code uses for the state. So I'm just wondering, is... Is it possible to get around putting in the six-inch water main, or is it, to get a fire hydrant back there, you need to put a six-inch main to get to that point?
Fire hydrants have to be on a minimum six-inch service line, yes.
And there's no way to do a yard hydrant, perhaps?
Well, there may be, there may be a way to get a fire department connection that's connected to the sprinkler, to the suppression system, that's at the, you know, at the building. We'd have to speak with our MEP, but, you know, at the rear of the building, over here, possibly, but it wouldn't be a true fire hydrant. We may be able to get a connection back there that could get some water supply back there, but again, it's not the same level as a dedicated fire hydrant.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I know that in some larger, like warehouse-type setting, they do have these things that are yard hydrants, right? They're not necessarily supplied off a main. You'll see them in like trash facility, stuff like that, that they're more so a connection that you're not, they're not usually built off the main, they're more of a secondary kind of fire hydrant. Is that something that the applicant would be willing to look into to perhaps satisfy that?
We would definitely look into getting, let's say, an additional method of fire protection at the rear of the building that does not require a new fire service line or a, you know, six-inch line coming from the street. If we could get something that fed off of the suppression system in the building, we could pursue that.
I think that would be...
See if that's feasible.
That would be the way to go, because I just want to reiterate that what we're finding with these EV fires and the charging stations itself is that just the amount of water carried alone on the Class A fire engines we have in Jackson, you'll need more than we have in the town to put an initial fire out. So just for the safety stance of it altogether, I think it would be, I think it would be who of everybody to look into a secondary system to try to meet that requirement.
I would agree to look into that alternative.
Thank you.
Excellent suggestion. And I'm sure that Mr. Shea is writing that down as we...
Already got it.
Thank you. Anyone else on the board? Mr. Klee?
I'm in here.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to call up our architect.
All right, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right, please state your name and spell your last of the record.
Richard Tokarski, T-O-K-A-R-S-K-I, firm of Tokarski Millman Architects of Wall, New Jersey.
All right.
You want to give a little bit of your benefit of your background and qualifications?
Yes, I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. I've presented before this board numerous times.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Dr. Campbell.
The board accepts his credentials.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Okay, and if you could, Rick, why don't we pull up your exhibit and why don't you go through what the applicant is proposing here? I think your exhibits will speak a thousand words, as they say.
Sure. On the exhibit, drawing A4, what we're proposing is a second mezzanine. You'll see this rectangular bar in the back of the building, which is a second mezzanine, which is access from a stair that comes up here. It's 787 square feet, and it's additional amenity space for the office building. Anthony, if you could go to the next slide, please? So these are some renderings done by CMR Designs. They're the interior designer that we're working with on the project. And as you'll see from these renderings, it's not additional workspace, there's not workstations, it's coffee bars, seating areas, it's additional space for people who are working within the building to get up from their desk, go to a different area, have a meeting. So it does not increase the occupancy load of the building, it's just additional amenity space. Here, you'll see the coffee bar and some stool seating in the back. Anthony, if you could flip to the next exhibit. There's some lounge seating with tables for on-spot meetings. And if you can go to the third one, please. And here, you see the tall counters with bar stool seating. People could have, you know, take a break, have lunch, have coffee, and that's the additional amenity space that we're proposing.
And there will be no offices there, no meeting space?
No.
No new facility, except for socialization?
Exactly. It's a place to take a break, have a small breakout meeting, not workstations.
Do you want to just describe some of the actual materials you're using?
Not really. I think you can see from the pictures, it's gonna be beautiful space, it's Class A, there's different panellings, wall treatments, flooring, it's all high-end materials.
This is within the existing structure of the existing building, right?
Yes. This is basically at the third level, there's two floors of workspace. The third level consists of mezzanine space, which is these amenity spaces. To the right, you can see a railing which looks down into the second floor where the office area is.
What's the safety railing system? It's how high?
42 inches.
Just worried about children visiting for any reason?
So do we. Yep. Code compliant 42-inch high rail.
So it's compliant with the safety?
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions on the board? Mr. Klee?
I'm here.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all we got?
That's it.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion to open to the public for cross-examination of witnesses on this application and this application only. Sullivan?
Second, Bresi.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, anyone who has questions for the two gentlemen who just testified, please feel free to come forward.
See?
Yeah, come up to the...
But you have to, you have to come up here.
You gotta come up to the podium.
To the microphone and be sworn in. Thank you.
How you doing? Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
You gotta speak into the microphone.
Yes, yes. Yeah, my name's Tom, I actually...
Well, hang on.
My name's Tom Anecarico.
Please state your name, spell your last of the record, and give your address.
Yeah, Tom Anecarico, A-N-N-E-C-H-A-R-I-C-O. Can you hear me?
Address, please?
I own the property next door.
Address, sir?
It's 154 North County Line.
Thank you.
Okay, I just had a question regarding the...
You just speak into the microphone.
The people at home need to hear.
Oh, I had a question about the EVs in the back. Wouldn't it be better to have a fire extingu, oh, should be, a fire hydrant there? Who would answer that question?
Graham, ma'am.
Well, we've had some discussion about that, and again, you know, the Fire Bureau recommended a dedicated fire hydrant, but at the suggestion of Mr. Tremmer, we had discussion about getting some form of fire suppression, even though it's not a dedicated fire hydrant back there.
But wouldn't it be better to have a fire hydrant? There's many pictures on the internet. It's true, when those catch on fire...
Sir, do you have to use a fire hydrant?
Yeah.
When those catch, sorry, when they catch on fire, it does take a lot of work to put them out, right?
Well, I'm not the expert in fire suppression or how you put out an EV fire. I mean, I also believe electrical fires a lot of times are put out with foam, not just with water.
Right.
But I think getting some measure, some water back there for emergency purposes, I think is a benefit. And given all of the particulars of this project, what we're asking for, and considering what's already been completed, I think it's very, very reasonable to try to get, you know, some measure of protection back there without the need for a dedicated fire hydrant.
Because there's woods back there too, right? Borders the woods, I believe.
Yeah, there are some woods around the property.
What I mean is where you want to relocate the stations, isn't that where the woods are?
No, that's within areas that were already approved for parking spaces. We're simply changing, you know, the designation of some of those parking spaces and, you know, putting the EV charging units in spaces that are already approved in the project.
Did I misunderstand though, you wanted to move the spaces?
Sir?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Did I misunderstand?
You can move the microphone to where...
Could you move the mic to help you?
Did I misunderstand you want to move the spaces?
Anthony, could you...
More towards the rear, right?
Anthony, just put A2 up again for me, please, and maybe I'll just show you again. So you can see these spaces that are kind of shaded.
Right, right, right.
Anthony, zoom in if you don't mind, please.
So where are the spaces going? The back ones?
No, just give me a second. So this plan, the approved plan, these are already proposed parking spaces.
Sure.
Okay, they're just not designated EV parking spaces. The approved plan had three EV parking spaces over here next to the building.
I see.
So now we're just changing these parking spaces from, you know, let's say, conventional spaces to EV parking spaces.
And all the chargers are going to be next to each other, all the...
Yeah, they're usually in pairs.
Yeah, yeah, so hypothetically, there could be, what, how many spaces are there there?
Well, that's a total of nine, six plus three.
So there could be nine electrical vehicles there, let's say, one in the middle there catches on fire, and then what would happen to the ones? I've seen vehicles sitting on the parkway burning for hours and hours and hours and hours, and there's just one vehicle there.
Well, I'm not going to argue whether there's, you know, a possibility of a fire occurring.
Well, that's why you would want a fire.
Of course, we know that that's a possibility.
Right.
You know, but again, we're proposing to provide a measure of fire suppression that comes off the suppression system from the building instead of a dedicated, you know, fire line running all the way around the building.
But you're not an expert in that though, correct?
I'm not an expert in the fire suppression or the fires for EV charging stations.
And you have nobody here to testify about, hey, it's okay if we don't have a fire hydrant there?
There is no code that requires a fire hydrant there. So we're actually going to try to be accommodating by looking at an alternate suppression system as was recommended by Mr. Tremmer, and we're going to do that. But there is no code that says you have to have a fire hydrant next to EV stations. And I've done plenty of site plan applications where there's no fire hydrant next to the EV stations, and so it's not a law.
And you want to move the spaces, why? I'm sorry, I, maybe I didn't hear that. Why do you want to move the spaces?
The microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I can't hear you.
And you want to move...
We wanted to move the spaces further away from the building, and we wanted to provide additional EV parking spaces.
Right, additional ones, right.
Correct.
Right, right. But more, I guess what I'm trying to say is more risk of a fire, right?
So the applicant stipulates that they'll put in the additional fire suppression system, correct?
Is that what, did he?
Yes.
Well, Mr. McFaul, you said before you will look into it. Can we confirm the words that stipulation, you'll get it done?
If it's feasible, we will do it. If it is, we would agree to come back to the board if it's determined to be not feasible.
You'll come back to the board if you can.
Yes.
So he's not saying, just to be clear, he's not saying he's putting it in, they're going to look into it?
No, so what's going to happen is that due to the fact that they're stipulating to the additional fire suppression system, if it's engineeringly infeasible, they'll have to come back to the board for a renewed schematic of a system to be put in.
It's still bare land there, there's no pavement on anything. What? I'm sorry?
You have to understand that this is a 2016 application...
Oh, I know.
That is already, all the infrastructure is in and all the girder systems are in. If you drive down the street, it's all built.
I know, I've seen it.
They're just putting in a mezzanine, that's it.
I'm not referring to the mezzanine, I'm referring to the...
Yes, but the point is there, all the infrastructure is already there, and they're stipulating that they will make, they will make sure that they can put in the fire suppression system that they don't, aren't required to do by code.
Right.
But if they cannot, they will come back to the board.
But you could say to them, if you want these additional spaces, we want you to do this, correct?
No, they could not impose a fire hydrant since there's not a law that requires that. They could not do that.
So just to be clear...
Why ask for the additional spaces, and why don't you just do it? Why don't they just move them where they want?
So just to be clear, what happens is that the planning board has to, we are governed by what the ordinance specifies.
Yes.
Right, but that's only the local ordinance. What happens is that the fire department has, it's called an outside agency jurisdiction over what they are requesting for fire suppression systems. In this case, what's happened is that the fire department has indicated they want an additional fire hydrant in an additional location, but there's nothing statutorily that requires that. So what we're trying to do is meet the applicant, meet the applicant in the middle, so to speak, and say, listen, if you can put in an additional fire suppression system that you technically aren't required to have pursuant to the ordinance and pursuant to, you know, state federal statutes, you know, it would be good for you to meet us in the middle here, you know, to do that. So what they've agreed to is that they're going to put in the additional fire suppression system. If it's engineeringly infeasible to do so, they're going to come back for an additional request to put something else in to make sure that that is covered fire suppression-wise.
Is that what, is that what they stipulated to?
They just stipulated to it, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
It'll go into the resolution, whole nine yards.
So if they can't put it in, they're going to come back to you again?
Correct.
We got those words straightened out, yes.
Okay, okay. Whereas before, they were just going to try.
Yeah, we had to get away from the look at, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you.
You got it.
Anyone else?
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please state your name and spell your last with a record.
John Chappell, that's C-H-A-P-P-E-L-L, 871 Bowman Road, Jackson.
All right.
I have a question, I think it's architecture. Prior to this mezzanine, what was in place that was approved? In other words, what's being added when we say that we want to introduce the mezzanine? Is this additional, is this another floor?
Yes, originally, it was a two-story building with a mezzanine. The mezzanine that was approved prior was towards the front of the building. This is additional mezzanine space on the backside of the building, but it's internal to the footprint.
Okay. So as part of that, has there been any consideration for access to the mezzanine? Will there be additional stairways, additional restrooms, power, heating, ventilating, air conditioning? Is there anything that has to be changed in order to support that?
Yes, we did add an additional stair that goes from the second floor up to that mezzanine. It only, because of this limited size of it and the occupancy load, it only requires one stair. We also did look at the travel distance, and that was all met with one stair that goes from the mezzanine down to the second floor.
Okay.
It doesn't require any, it's not accommodating any more people, so there's no additional bathroom load. It's, all those people are, within the building already, and is satisfied with the restrooms that are currently designed.
Okay, and is there additional power that's being run?
Yes. Knowing that this was coming up, we did look at the heating and air conditioning, the structural system, the mechanical systems, and they've all been modified to accommodate this mezzanine should it be approved.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Seeing no one else come forward, I move to close the cross-examination portion of this application. Sullivan?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I make a motion to open the public comment portion of this application and this application only. Sullivan?
Second, Bresi.
Would anyone like to speak about this application in any way?
Seeing no one come forward, I move to close the public comment portion of this application. Sullivan?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Summation?
Sure, I think in the grand scheme of things, it's a pretty benign application, simply adding some additional mezzanine space really for the comfort of the tenants that are going to be there, so maybe they don't have to run out to Starbucks at their lunch break. And we are obviously improving the parking shortage, going from twelve less spaces to nine. So as Mr. Peters said, less worse than what was already approved. I would respectfully request that the board grant an approval.
Anything from you, gentlemen?
I'm in here.
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Anything from the board? We'll look for a resolution, a...
I'd like to make a motion.
Motion?
Based on the fact that you reduced the shortage in the parking, it's a big plus, you don't usually see that, and the EV parking moving away from the buildings, and committing to getting the water out towards those EV parking, I think that's a lot of movement and it was a good application to begin with, but it made it better. I make a motion to approve.
I'll second that, Sullivan, and add to that, that I appreciate the applicant's willingness to work with the fire district in finding some sort of suppression system for that EV parking, and with that, I second the motion, Sullivan.
Mr. Bresi?
Before I vote, I want to thank Mr. Tremmer because on these boards, you look for people who have experience in certain areas. He's a fireman in many places, and I'm glad he came up with a suggestion about coming off the building. I make a motion, I vote yes.
Mr. Marzo?
Yes.
Mr. Heller?
Yes.
Mr. Rogers?
Yes.
Ms. Santoro?
Yes.
Mr. Tremmer?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell?
Yes, congratulations.
Great, thank you so much. Have a great night.